The special meeting of the Aurora City Council for Wednesday, March 12th, 2025 is called to order with the clerk please call the roll.
Mayor Kaufman.
Here.
Councilmember Bergen.
Here.
Councilmember Coombs.
President.
Councilmember Gardner. Councilmember Hancock.
Here.
Councilmember Drinsky. Councilmember Kasaw.
Here.
Councilmember Lawson.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Morio.
President.
Mayor Protim Sundberg.
Here.
There's a quorum.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor.
Councilmember Bergen.
Point of privilege, Katie on the east scribe? Today's agenda's not popping up. It's on there, but no, I can't access it. Thank you.
Please join me in a moment of silence in memory of those who have lost their lives Thank you. The next question before us is the adoption of the agenda.
Mayor.
Motion is in order, Councilmember Bergen.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Moved by Councilmember Bergen, seconded by.
Sundberg.
Mayor Protim Sundberg. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, call for the question on the adoption of the agenda.
Mayor Kaufman.
Mayor VHS.
Councilmember Bergen.
Yes.
Councilmember Coombs. Councilmember Drinsky.
Yes.
Councilmember Hancock.
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson.
Yes.
The motion passes to adopt the agenda.
Clerk now please read the title to item number 6A.
Item 6A is consideration of Resolution 2025-26 approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Aurora and the South Aurora Regional Improvement Authority for the transfer of transportation impact fee revenues.
Brief presentation by staff.
Good afternoon, city council members and mayor, Michael Carrigan with the Office of Development Assistance. This agreement is being proposed in order for the city to support Sariah and the regional improvements it has authorized to construct. The city will transfer to Sariah the city's collected transportation capital impact fees, the properties that are developing within the boundaries of the 22 metropolitan districts that currently make up Sariah, plus any future metropolitan districts that join Sariah. The city collects this fee when a building permit is issued, and as per the agreement, it is required to send that fee to Sariah within 60 days of collection. The term of this IGA is from the execution date of the IGA until the termination and final dissolution of Sariah. Sariah will use the impact fee revenues generated consistent with its establishment agreement to plan, design, construct, install, acquire, relocate, redevelop, and/or to refinance regional improvements that is authorized to undertake. Sariah intends to use the impact fees revenue as an additional revenue pledge for its upcoming bond issuance. The total amount of impact fee revenues is estimated to be approximately $3.2 million over the next seven years. That figure is based on the current estimates of Sariah member districts build out and the 2025 impact fee cost. This contract is not a multi-fiscal year obligation of the city, and it will require annual appropriations. And then we also have representatives of Sariah here to discuss.
Our questions of staff.
Mayor.
Councilmember Bergen.
You stated that the impact fees were $3.2 million over the next seven years.
Estimated to be.
So that, those are the impact fees that we are, that we are going to give to Sariah.
Correct.
So, but the city actually for Southeast Aurora has more than $3.2 million in impact fees, is my understanding? That could be used for Gun Club Road?
I'm actually not sure what they can be used for.
Well, they can.
If there's somebody from finance.
They can be used for transportation, it's transportation impact fees, so they can be used for transportation. I just want to get clarification that the 3.2 is not the entirety of the impact fees that have been collected thus far by those different neighborhoods.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions of the staff? Seeing none, motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Bergen.
Motion to approve 6A.
Moved by Councilmember Bergen, seconded by.
Mayor's second.
Seconded by Councilmember Lawson to approve item number 6A. Discussion. See, no discussion, call for the question on item number 6A.
Councilmember Coombs.
Yes.
Councilmember Drinsky.
Yes.
The motion passes to adopt item 6A.
Let me recognize the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers and Mayor, as we move into these next public hearings of 13, just as a reminder, these are quasi judicial, which means they all stand on their own, so you may hear repeated information for each of the hearings as we move forward. So I just want to remind you, that's the purpose of that, that each individual hearing has to stand on their own, then in case somebody decides to appeal council's decision, they have to be within their own hearing, so just keep that in mind, and we're going to follow the hearing procedure where we'll have presentation by the applicant and by staff, then there'll be a period of questions, then there'll be a motion, then there'll be discussion for each action item.
Clerk now please read the title to item number 7A.
Item 7A is public hearing consideration of ordinance 2025-23 approving an amendment to the service plan for Forest Trace Metropolitan District Number One.
Public hearing is now open, a presentation by staff.
Good afternoon again, council members and mayor, Michael Carrigan, the special district administrator with the Development Services Department. So just that I'm not repeating myself in the full length for 13 times today here, I'll give you one brief overview of why these service plans are being requested, and then I will describe the amendments for each of the individual service plans during those respective public hearings. The 13 service plan amendments before you today are all from member metro districts of the South Aurora Regional Improvement Authority, or Sariah. The 13 districts have pledged their Aurora Regional Improvements, or ARI, mill levy revenues to Sariah, and Sariah uses that revenue to construct regional improvements. Sariah is planning to issue bonds that will use the ARI mill levy revenue as a source of repayment. The metro district service plans currently have the model service plan language definition and restrictions for ARI mill levy, which include tier one, the ARI mill levy begins in the year that a district first levies a debt mill, and the ARI mill levy is equal to one mill. Tier one continues for 20 years. Tier two, the ARI mill levy is equal to five mills, and it continues from the 21st year through the 40th year, or when the district's debt is repaid, whichever occurs first. And then the third and final tier has an ARI mill levy equal to the average debt service mill levy for the 10 years prior to the district debt repayment, and tier three continues for the last 10 years. The current definitions of the ARI mill levy is based on this tiering system where that third tier will not be known until 40 or 50 years into the future. This is because that ARI third tier is that average debt service from the last 10 years of debt repayment. So this unknown nature of that third tier of ARI mill levy becomes a disadvantage when trying to bond against this revenue stream, and it makes it impractical to perform revenue projections. This uncertainty makes for a less efficient financing. The metro districts are proposing to amend their service plan language to change the definition of the ARI mill levy. The essence of the service plan amendments is to provide a fixed and known ARI mill levy today for this third tier. The boards of each of the 13 metro districts have approved these amendments and have authorized Sariah to request approval through city council. The first public hearing is for the Forest Trace Metropolitan District Number One. Forest Trace Metropolitan District Number One is amending its service plan to change the definition of its tier three ARI mill levy. The new tier three ARI mill levy will be equal to 30 mills. There are no other changes with this service plan amendment. This concludes my staff report for this public hearing.
Is there a presentation by the applicant?
There is not one.
There is not? Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this issue?
No.
Questions of staff or the applicant? Questions of staff or the applicant? Seeing none, motion is in order. Public hearing is now closed. Motion is in order for the adoption of item number 7A.
Mayor.
Councilmember Bergen.
Yeah, I'll be making a lot of motions because it's in my area. 7A, I'd like to make a motion to approve 7A.
Moved by Councilmember Bergen, seconded by.
Councilmember Drinsky.
Seconded by Councilmember Drinsky to approve item number 7A. Discussion.
Mayor.
Councilmember Bergen.
And I just want to make a statement, I won't make it repeatedly for every single district, but there's been a lot of engagement, public engagement and discussion on this with the metro districts, and so as stated by staff, this is a way for Sariah to go out and issue bonds to finance very important transportation projects that are identified in the priority lists such as the Aurora Parkway Bridge, the Gar Trail Bridge, and then also Gun Club Road, and then there's a couple others. So it is important, and just bottom line on this, those districts that are being represented, they had the choice to either keep their current mill levy if it was below the 30. Some have chosen to do that, and then as Forest Trace, they have chosen to accept the flat 30 mills for that last tier, so thank you very much.
Further discussion? Seeing none, call for the question on the adoption of item number 7A.
Councilmember Drinsky.
Yes.
Councilmember Coombs.
Yes.
The motion passes to adopt item 7A.
Clerk now please read the title to item number 7B.
Item 7B is public hearing in consideration of ordinance 2025-24 approving an amendment to the service plan for Forest Trace Metro District Number Three.
Public hearing is now open. Presentation by staff.
The Forest Trace Metropolitan District Number Three is amending its service plan to change the definition of its tier three ARI mill levy. The new tier three ARI mill levy will be equal to 30 mills, and there are no other changes with the service plan amendment. This concludes my staff report for this public hearing.
Presentation by applicant?
No, there's not.
Is there anybody who wishes to be heard on this issue?
No.
Questions from council to staff or the applicant? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed, and a motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Bergen.
Motion to approve 7B.
Moved by Councilmember Bergen, seconded by.
Mayor's second.
Seconded by Councilmember Lawson to approve item number 7B. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, call for the question on the adoption of item number 7B.
Councilmember Coombs.
Yes.
Councilmember Drinsky. Councilmember Drinsky. I think she dropped off. Thank you.
I'm a yes.
Oh, thank you. The motion passes to adopt item 7B.
With the clerk now please read the title to item number 7C.
Item 7C is public hearing in consideration of ordinance 2025-25 approving amendment to the amended and restated consolidated service plan for Inspiration Metro District.
Public hearing is now open, presentation by staff.
The Inspiration Metropolitan District is amending its service plan to change the definition of its tier three ARI mill levy. The new tier three ARI mill levy will be equal to 30 mills. There are no other changes with this service plan amendment. We have received an email from a resident of this district regarding this item, and then the clerk has distributed this comment to city council. This concludes my staff report for this public hearing.
Presentation by the applicant?
And there is not one.
Is there anybody who wishes to be heard on this issue? Questions of staff or the applicant by members of council? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed, motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Bergen.
Motion to approve 7C.
Moved by.
Kasaw.
Moved by Councilmember Bergen, seconded by Councilmember Kasaw to approve item number 7C. Discussion. Seeing none, call for the question on the adoption of item number 7C.
Councilmember Coombs.
Yes.
Councilmember Drinsky. The motion passes to adopt item 7C.
Clerk now please read the title to item number 7D.
Item 7D is public hearing consideration of ordinance 2025-26 approving an amendment to the amended and restated consolidated service plan for Kings Point South Metro District Number One.
Public hearing is now open, presentation by staff.
The Kings Point South Metropolitan District Number One is amending its service plan to change the definition of its tier one and tier three ARI mill levies. The new tier one ARI mill levy will be equal to five mills, and the new tier three ARI mill levy will be equal to 30 mills. There are no other changes with this service plan amendment. This concludes my staff report for this.
Presentation by the applicant?
There's not one.
Does anybody wish to be heard on this issue? Questions of staff or the applicant by members of council? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed, and a motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Bergen.
Motion to approve 7D.
Moved by Councilmember Bergen, seconded by.
Kasaw.
Councilmember Kasaw to approve item number 7C.
7D.
7D. Further discussion? Seeing none, call for the question on item number 7D.
Councilmember Drinsky.
Yes.
Councilmember Coombs.
Yes.
The motion passes to adopt item 7D.
With clerk now please read the title to item number 7E.
Item 7E is public hearing consideration of ordinance 2025-27 approving amendment to the amended and restated consolidated service plan for Kings Point South Metro District Number Two.
Public hearing is now open, presentation by staff.
The Kings Point South Metropolitan District Number Two is amending its service plan to change the definition of its tier one and tier three ARI mill levies. The new tier one ARI mill levy will be equal to five mills, and the new tier three ARI mill levy will be equal to 30 mills. There are no other changes with this service plan amendment. This concludes my staff report for this public hearing.
Presentation by the applicant?
There's not a separate one.
Does anybody wish to be heard on this issue?
No.
Are there any questions of staff or the applicant from members of council? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed, and a motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Bergen.
Motion to approve 7E.
E.
E.
Okay.
I did, E.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bergen, seconded by.
Sundberg.
Councilmember Sundberg to approve item number 7E. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, call for the question on the adoption of item number 7E.
Councilmember Coombs.
Yes.
Councilmember Drinsky.
Yes.
The motion passes to adopt item 7E.
Clerk now please read the title to item number 7F.
Item 7F is public hearing introduction of ordinance 2025-28 approving amendment to the service plan for Kings Point South Metro District Number Three.
Public hearing is now open, presentation by staff.
The Kings Point South Metropolitan District Number Three is amending its service plan to change the definition of its tier one and tier three ARI mill levies. The new tier one ARI mill levy will be equal to five mills, and the new tier three ARI mill levy will be equal to 30 mills. There are no other changes with this service plan amendment. This concludes my staff report for this public hearing.
Presentation by the applicant?
There's not a separate one.
Anybody wish to be heard on this issue?
No.
Questions of staff or the applicant by members of council? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed, and a motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Bergen.
Motion to approve 7F.
Moved by Councilmember Bergen, seconded by.
Kasaw.
Drinsky.
Councilmember Kasaw to approve item number 7F. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, call for the question on the adoption of item number 7F.
Councilmember Drinsky.
Yes.
Councilmember Coombs.
Yes.
The motion passes to adopt item 7F.
Clerk now please read the title to item number 7G.
Item 7G is public hearing consideration of ordinance 2025-29 approving an amendment to the service plan for the overlook at Kings Point South Metro District.
Public hearing is now open, presentation by staff.
The overlook at Kings Point South Metropolitan District is amending its service plan to change the definition of its tier one and tier three ARI mill levies. The new tier one ARI mill levy will be equal to five mills, and the new tier three ARI mill levy will be equal to 30 mills. There are no other changes with this service plan amendment. This concludes my staff report for this public hearing.
Presentation by the applicant?
There's not a separate one.
Does anybody wish to be heard on this issue?
No.
Questions of staff by members of council? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed, motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Bergen.
Motion to approve 7G.
Moved by Councilmember Bergen, seconded by.
Mayor's second.
Councilmember Lawson to approve item number 7G. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, call for the question on item number 7G.
Councilmember Coombs.
Yes.
Councilmember Drinsky.
Yes.
Mayor Protim. The motion passes to adopt item 7G.
Clerk now please read the title to item number 7H.
Item 7H is public hearing in consideration of ordinance 2025-30 approving an amendment to the second amended and restated service plan for Prairie Point Metro District Number One.
Presentation by, oh, public hearing is now open, presentation by staff.
The Prairie Point Metropolitan District Number One is amending its service plan to change the definition of its tier one and tier three ARI mill levies. The new tier one ARI mill levy will be equal to five mills, and the new tier three ARI mill levy will be equal to 30 mills. There are no other changes with this service plan amendment. This concludes my staff report for this public hearing.
Presentation by the applicant?
There is not a separate one.
Does anybody wish to be heard on this issue?
No.
Questions of staff or the applicant by members of council? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed, and a motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Bergen.
Motion to approve 7H.
Moved by Councilmember Bergen, seconded by.
Drinsky.
Councilmember Drinsky to approve item number 7H. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, call for the question on item number 7H.
Councilmember Drinsky.
Yes.
Councilmember Coombs.
Yes.
The motion passes to adopt item 7H.
Clerk now please read the title to item number 7I.
Item 7I is public hearing in consideration of ordinance 2025-31 approving amendment to the second amended and restated service plan for Prairie Point Metro District Number
Public hearing is now open, presentation by staff.
The Prairie Point Metropolitan District Number Two is amending its service plan to change the definition of its tier one and its tier three ARI mill levies. The new tier one ARI mill levy will be equal to five mills, and the new tier three ARI mill levy will be equal to 30 mills. There are no other changes with this service plan amendment. This concludes my staff report for this public hearing.
Presentation by the applicant?
There's not a separate one.
Does anybody wish to be heard on this issue?
No.
Are there any questions from members of council to staff or the applicant? Public hearing is now closed, motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Bergen.
Motion to approve 7I.
Moved by Councilmember Bergen, seconded by.
Kasaw.
Councilmember Kasaw to approve item number 7I. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, call for the question on item number 7I.
Councilmember Coombs.
Yes.
Councilmember Drinsky.
Yes.
The motion passes to adopt item 7I.
Clerk now please read the title to item number 7J.
Item 7J is public hearing consideration of ordinance 2025-32 approving an amendment to the amended and restated service plan for Prairie Point Metro District Number Three.
Public hearing is now open, presentation by staff.
The Prairie Point Metropolitan District Number Three is amending its service plan to change the definition of its tier one and tier three ARI mill levies. The new tier one ARI mill levy will be equal to five mills, and the new tier three ARI mill levy will be equal to 30 mills. There are no other changes with this service plan amendment. This concludes my staff report for this public hearing.
Presentation by the applicant?
There is not a separate one.
Does anybody wish to be heard on this issue?
No.
Are there any questions from members of council to staff or the applicant? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, and a motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Bergen.
Motion to approve 7J.
Moved by Councilmember Bergen, seconded by. Moved by Councilmember Bergen, seconded by?
Sundberg.
Drinsky.
Seconded by Mayor Protim Sundberg. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, question before us is the adoption of number 7J.
Councilmember Drinsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Coombs?
Yes.
The motion passes to adopt item 7J.
Clerk, now please read the title to item number 7K.
Item 7K is public hearing consideration of Ordnance 2025-33 approving an amendment to the service plan for Pronghorn Valley Metro District.
Public hearing is now open. Presentation by staff.
The Pronghorn Valley Metropolitan District is amending its service plan to change the definition of its Tier 3 ARI mill levy. The new Tier 3 ARI mill levy will be equal to 30 mills. There are no other changes with the service plan amendment. This concludes my staff report for this public hearing.
Presentation by the applicant?
There is not one.
Does anybody wish to be heard on this issue?
No.
Questions of councilmembers to staff or the applicant? Public hearing is now closed. Motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Bergen?
Motion to approve 7K.
Moved by Councilmember Bergen, seconded by?
Drinsky.
Seconded by Councilmember Drinsky. Discussion. Seeing none, call for the question on item number 7K.
Councilmember Drinsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Coombs?
Yes.
Councilmember Hancock? Thank you. The motion passes to adopt item 7K.
Clerk, now please read the title to item number 7L.
Item 7L is a public hearing consideration of Ordnance 2025-34 approving an amendment to the amended and restated service plan for Sorrel Ranch Metro District.
Public hearing is now open. Presentation by staff.
The Sorrel Ranch Metropolitan District is amending its service plan to change the definition of its Tier 3 ARI mill levy. The new Tier 3 ARI mill levy will be equal to its 2023 debt service mill that is collected in 2024. There are no other changes with this service plan amendment. We have received two emails from residents of this district regarding this item, and those have been distributed to council. This concludes my staff report for this public hearing.
Presentation by the applicant? Does anybody wish to be heard on this issue?
No.
Are there any questions from members of council to staff or the applicant? Public hearing is now closed. Motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Bergen?
Motion to approve 7L.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bergen, seconded by?
Mayor's second.
Councilmember Lawson. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, call for the question on the adoption of item number 7L.
Councilmember Coombs?
Yes.
Councilmember Drinsky?
Yes.
The motion passes to adopt item 7L.
Clerk, now please read the title to item number 7M.
Item 7M is public hearing consideration of Ordnance 2025-35 approving an amendment to the service plan for Whispering Pines Metro District.
Presentation by the applicant? Oh, public hearing is now open. Presentation by the applicant?
By staff? The Whispering Pines Metropolitan District Number 1 is amending its service plan to change the definition of its Tier 3 ARI mill levy. The new Tier 3 ARI mill levy will be equal to its 2023 debt service mill levy that is collected in 2024. There are no other changes with this service plan amendment. This concludes my staff report for this public hearing.
Presentation by the applicant?
There's not a separate one.
Does anybody wish to be heard on this issue?
No.
Are there any questions from members of council to staff or the applicant?